Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Shelton Board of Education Special Meeting in Person held at the Board Office on Long Hill Avenue. It is Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two. It is six fifteen P. M. May I have a call to order? Roll call, please.
Joseph Pagliaro.
Here.
Lorraine Rosner.
Here.
Kate Koutas.
Here.
Diana Meyer.
Here.
Patty Moonin.
Here.
James Orzetti.
Here.
Carl Wizzo.
Here.
Amy Romano.
She did text. She's on her way.
On her way. Not here yet.
And Kathy Yolish.
Here.
In the minutes will also reflect in attendance John Calhoun, Todd Hasselstaker, Carol Nozo, Hannah Saranich, Kristin St. Tilly, and Hershey Sager. Last name, please again, please. On the floor.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion made by Kate Koutas, second.
Second.
Second by Lorraine Rosner. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. Agenda item three, yearly reorganization of the Board, election of officers. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, are you going to read that?
Sure. Just put my reading glasses on.
That may do.
In accordance with the current bylaws of the Shelton Board of Education, ninety-one ten and ninety-one twenty, all officers of the Board shall hold a term of one year until their successor are elected or have qualified. Each voting Board member shall cast his or her vote for election of officers. The results of the election shall be recorded in the minutes of the meeting, and the minutes shall be available for public inspection at a reasonable time. If such officers are not chosen after one month because of a tie vote of the members, a chairperson shall be chosen in conformity with state statute. The members of the Board of Education may select a person to cast as moderator for the purposes of the election of officers. They may select by ballot or voice, I'm sorry, or vote, or voice vote for its members, chairman, chairperson, vice chairperson, and a secretary.
Okay. We need a motion to select a moderator for election of officers.
Madam Chair, may I request that our superintendent act as moderator for the election of officers?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Superintendent.
So, as moderator, I need a motion to conduct elections for the office by ballot or vote. The first motion would, so I need a motion to conduct elections of officers by ballot or vote, voice vote. If someone please make.
I make a motion that we make our election by voice vote. Roll call.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. First, I will be taking any motions for the nomination of chairperson.
I'd like to make a nomination for the office of Chairman. I'd like to nominate Kathy Yolish for the Chair of Shelton B. O. E. Kathy has taught in grades two, three, four, and five at four different schools in Shelton, totaling thirty-five years as an educator. She is a recipient of many awards, including several I. D. E. A. Grants, the Weller Award, a Disney Teacher of the Year nominee, Walmart Valley Teacher of the Year, and was a Shelton Teacher of the Year finalist several times. She was listed in Who's Who in American Education, received a Chase Bank Award to start a family macro from Elizabeth Shelton School, and was a professional development presenter for Shelton teacher workshops. She's also served as a mentor for over fifteen student teachers, many of whom who were hired to teach in Shelton. She has been the Chair of the Shelton B. O. E. for the past three years and has subtly steered this board through COVID and the transitioning from an interim superintendent to our present superintendent, Hannah Saranich. As such, Kathy is more than qualified for this position of Board Chair.
Do we need a second?
Is there a second?
Second. I didn't say anything.
You were a second hand. Rose. [laughing].
Are there any other motions for a nomination for chairperson?
I would. I would like to also put another one in. May I? I would also like to nominate James Orzetti for Chairman. I've learned over the past few years what makes a board successful. The children, of course, is our number one priority, but communication is the key to a successful functioning board. Without communication, how can we help the children of this district? Jimmy, over the past years, has been a glue to make that communication happy, happen with our city officials. He has spent endless hours repairing the damaged relationship that our predecessors left us. He is in constant contact advocating for our students, the Board of Aldermen, and city officials. As you know, he is always actively involved in the budget process, which I'm sure he will be again this year. He has spearheaded reimbursables and has been proven advocate for updating our facilities. It doesn't matter if he's a committee chair, he's always been there to help, and his list of accomplishments are endless. When the Republican team needed him during controversial times, Jimmy was always standing in front of us to be our voice. He always kept us informed and would be the first one to call a caucus. Jimmy is what the Board of Education needs for leadership. It is imperative to keep the lines of communication open with the Board of Aldermen and city to advocate for our students' needs, especially with this possible upcoming deficits this year and next year's budget. I want to stress that point there. Jimmy needs to continue to service by being chairman, by not considering him, in my opinion, as not putting the children first. Thank you.
Do I have a second for that nomination?
I'll second.
Are there any other motions for nomination for chairperson? Are there any other motions for nomination of chairperson? Are there any other motions for the nomination of chairperson? Sensing none, we have two people on the ballot. I'm going to ask Mrs. MacIone to do a roll call vote. The vote, the choices for your chairperson would either be Mrs. Yolish or Mr. Orzetti. Mrs. MacIone?
Joseph Pagliaro.
Mr. Orzetti.
Lorraine Rosner.
Kathy Yolish.
Kate Koutas.
Kathy Yolish.
Diana Meyer.
Kathy Yolish.
Patty Moonin.
Kathy Yolish.
James Orzetti.
Carl Wizzo.
James Orzetti.
Amy Romano.
James Orzetti.
Kathy Yolish.
Kathy Yolish.
I have five for Kathy Yolish for James Orzetti.
Based on the election results, Mrs. Yolish will be the Board of Ed. Chairperson.
Thank you.
Next is the motions and nominations for Vice Chairperson. Are there any motions for nomination for Vice Chairperson?
I would like to make the nomination, please. I would like to nominate Kate Koutas, who continues her role as Vice Chair of the B. O. E. She has proven to be a valuable representative of the B. O. E. in many circumstances. She can continue to draw on her vast educational experience to make the choices necessary to support our students, our faculty, and our administration in her service to the Board of Education.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Are there any other motions for the nomination of Vice Chairperson?
Yes, I would still like to put James Orzetti's name back in. And I've already spoken, but I would also like to say, while I value everyone's attributes and what they have to offer to this board, the repeating theme that I would like to stress here this evening is communication. It is our duty and responsibility as Board members to stay in constant communication and advocate, advocate for the children and taxpayers of this community. And once again, Jimmy Orzetti is the one and only Board member on this Board of Education that is constant in communication with those officials on a daily basis, including Saturdays and Sundays, because I know that for a fact. These decisions should be made here tonight, not about ego or power. They should be about having a functioning, functioning, operational board. Thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other motions for nominations for Vice Chairperson? Are there any other motions for nominations for Vice Chairperson? Are there any other motions for nomination for Vice Chairperson? Sensing none, I'm going to ask Mrs. MacIone to do a voice vote, roll call vote, for the position of Vice Chair. Please either state your choice for Kate Koutas or Mr. Orzetti, Jim Orzetti.
Joseph Pagliaro.
Jim Orzetti.
Lorraine Rosner.
Kate Koutas.
Kate Koutas.
Kate Koutas.
Diana Meyer.
Kate Koutas.
Patty Moonin.
Kate Koutas.
James Orzetti.
Carl Wizzo.
James Orzetti.
Amy Romano.
James Orzetti.
Kathy Yolish.
I would say Kate Koutas. I've worked with her very well this year, and she hasn't been done with me, so, to that respect, I think we will have another good working year together.
So we have five for Kate Koutas and four for James Orzetti.
Based on the results of the vote, Mrs. Kate Koutas will be the Vice Chair for the Board of Education.
Congratulations.
Lastly, I would entertain motions for the nomination of Board Secretary. Are there any motions for the nomination of Board Secretary?
I would nominate Lorraine Rosner. In the interest of continuing our leadership team that we had in last year, I think they've worked well together. I think most of you know Lorraine's longevity within the Shelton school system and now a Board member, she's been a valuable asset, heading up our policy committee. I would love to nominate her.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other motions for the nomination of Secretary?
Yes, I'll put James Orzetti back in.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations or motions for the nomination of Secretary? Any other motions for the nomination of Secretary? Any other motions for the nomination of Secretary? Sensing none, I will ask Mrs. MacIone to do a roll call vote. Your choices would be Lorraine Rosner or Jim Orzetti for the position of Board of Ed. Secretary. Mrs. MacIone?
Joseph Pagliaro.
Jim Orzetti.
Lorraine Rosner.
Lorraine Rosner.
Kate Koutas.
Lorraine Rosner.
Diana Meyer.
Lorraine Rosner.
Patty Moonin.
Lorraine Rosner.
James Orzetti.
Carl Wizzo.
James Orzetti.
Amy Romano.
James Orzetti.
Kathy Yolish.
Lorraine Rosner.
Five for Lorraine Rosner for four for James Orzetti.
Based on the election results, Mrs. Rosner will be the Board Secretary. Madam Chair, that concludes the annual reorganization. I relinquish my position as moderator and give you back the Board.
Thank you very much. Before I continue with the approval of the consent agenda, I just want to say, thank you for the nomination. To those who have supported me, thank you very much. To those of you who have uplifted me, thank you very much. To those of you who have boosted my confidence and encouraged me, thank you very much. And to those of you who have challenged me and didn't support me, I thank you as well, because you have made me braver, stronger, and more ambitious, improving my ability to continue to be an even better Board Chair. And now, approval, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Okay, motion made by Kate Koutas, second.
All second.
Second by Lorraine Rosner. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. All right. Number five. Okay, we have a motion, I need a motion to approve the following dates for the Board of Education, twenty twenty-three monthly meetings at seven o'clock P. M., the fourth Wednesday of the month, with the exception of November fifteenth, which is the third Wednesday of the month due to Thanksgiving, and December thirteenth, for the second Wednesday of the month due to the Christmas holiday. All right? Motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Motion made by Kate Koutas, second.
I'll second.
Second by Patty Moonin. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Extension. Motion carries. Number six, approval and possible discussion. Bylaw, I have, I'm going to get a tattoo. Bylaw.
Madam Chair, point of order, Mrs. Meyer.
Oh, yes.
You don't have a full board.
Oh, that's right. Mrs. Meyer had to leave, so we will table nine, two, two, two.
Have a camera.
There's a shot.
Okay. All right.
Saved all that discussion.
Number seven, presentations.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one presentation this evening. This Board, this Board collectively made this decision a few years ago to have student representatives on our Board, and I think it was a very strong decision in terms of showing our appreciation for the students. And as it was already said this evening, you know, the purposes of the Board is to make this a better school system for the students who we work for. With that said, you know, we watch the progress of our students and how they progress, and one of our original Board representatives was Sanjana Jane, and she served this Board for an entire year and has moved on to figure in better things. So I want to recognize Sanjana because she applied to be as a state rep for the State Board of Education and was selected in the position there.
Wow.
And the Board, I would like to call her up today because the Board would like to recognize her, her achievement for being recognized as a Shelton representative to the State Board of Education.
Kristen, take a picture, Kristen.
Use the picture.
Get a picture. So he can tweet it. What's going on?
Kristen, take a picture, Kristen.
She's the picture.
Get a picture. So he can tweet it.
I want to say that Sanjana was also one of our recipients last night at the CAPS mayor, where she was recognized as one of our collaborators for.
We'll continue to hear more of her.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I will mention her later in my commentary. Number eight, Student Board of Education Representatives Report. Hershey, you're on.
Um, it seems that.
Give her the microphone so we can hear her.
It seems that Jayden isn't here today, so.
He was supposed to be here today, so I don't know.
But, starting off, last Saturday, our F L teams, which are the younger robotics teams, they had states, which all three teams made it to.
I know.
And all three teams also got awards. Technic got a judges award, the Resistors got a fourth place champions award, and then the Vipers got first place champions award, which means they're moving on to Worlds, which is in Houston.
Very good. Very nice.
Adaptations was also last weekend. That went very well. The football season has officially ended with them getting out in the semifinals. The National Honor Society inducting was supposed to happen Sunday, but due to the snow, they have postponed it. With the holidays coming up, our school is doing school spirit for twelve days and also door decorating competitions. Winter sports is moving full speed ahead now that fall sports has, have ended. N W A is starting with the mid-year assessments. We started those last week. The first semester is ending soon, which means midterms are at the end of January. Those are also coming up. And then this.
So it's been an extremely positive month as we continue to close out 2022. During this past month, I've attended several state and local meetings dealing with issues relative to Shelton and education, a lot of advocacy groups. Cilly and I just recently attended a presentation that took place at Center Stage about the Valley and where the Valley is growing economically in education. I went to the CAPS convention, the CAPE, and also to the State Department of Ed. Some of the major issues that are being discussed, I just want to make sure that the board is aware and the general public. And obviously, for us, there's a lot of discussion about the kindergarten through third grade reading program mandate, and a lot of the movement has happened on that. I know I've kept the board apprised about the waiver. We are still waiting for the state to produce such waiver that it supposedly do in February. As soon as it'll, we have yet to get the form, but as soon as it comes out, we were filling out at the last legislative breakfast that I attended in some discussions relative to what we do in Shelton here with wit and wisdom. I have been told, although we want to get the waiver in, that Shelton should not have any problems relative to what we do with wit and wisdom in the science of reading, but it is a hurdle that we have to go through. Teacher evaluation has been a major topic in discussion because they're going to be changing the teacher evaluation plan, and we're waiting for what the state will be rolling out on that. The teacher shortage issue and working conditions as general is a major concern across the state. There was a lot of talk about the excess cost funding and trying to, and how that is, has inequity in what was being offered to the school systems. And a lot of discussion relative to what will be done for mental health resources, not only for our students and our staff. This is trying time, so we want to make sure that we're supporting everybody. But these are a lot of important topics that we're hoping that the legislation addresses in the upcoming year, in 2023. As elected officials of the board, I hope you're there supporting us in the advocacy of these particular issues. Sickness is rampant in the Shelton public school system. A year ago, we dealt with COVID, which still exists in some forms, but the flu is really ramping up as well as RSV. I have to say, it has impacted our, our schools attendance, as you can even see in this, this meeting this evening. Events have been scheduled and postponed. It's not necessarily we're postponing them because flu is in existence, like COVID, where we shut things down, more than staff have been affected. Where we may have concerts, holiday concerts that were scheduled, the music teacher who's supposed to do the holiday concert has gotten sick, and we can't implement that. So we are trying to keep a regular schedule as much as we can and provide our students with every opportunity that we can as we go through it. In this report, I just, you know, and I know this will happen at the end of the meeting, but I'll take an opportunity for, it might part of the report to wish Mr. Pacquiao well and thank him for his service of the board. We always remember that this is a voluntary position, and we appreciate all the time and effort that you've given in the past and present in terms of your role as a board member. And although the board has a section in, in the agenda for celebrations, this is my opportunity in my, my superintendent's report to do my own celebration. And I just have to express my appreciation and gratitude for the leadership team here in Shelton. We are finding some difficult situations relative to staffing, illness, and such, and it's really taken a team effort to see us through in these final two weeks of 2022. And I just appreciate their dedication and their commitment to making things work. I really appreciate everything that has happened in these last few weeks. And far often, we are always told about issues when someone has a concern about what's happening in the school system. I think we need to take the time and stop and thank people and show them our gratitude for when things are done well. And the leadership team in Shelton has really been holding Shelton Public Schools together, and I appreciate it wholeheartedly and thank you. The last thing I just want to do is wish everyone happy holidays, enjoy your time off. I intend to as much as I can. Thank you. That's my report.
Okay, communication to the board, Mrs. Rosner.
We need one communication to the board.
Somebody.
Chairman Yolish, this is a big red, but I commit, he admits, his resignation from the Shelton Board of Education has up January first, 2023, due to health reasons. It has been my pleasure serving with the children of the city of Shelton since early Joseph Pacquiao Jr.
Well, what if I don't accept it?
I tried not.
How would I be truly calling?
What if madam doesn't accept it?
Madam doesn't accept it, I don't know.
I tried, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The next item is comments by the Board Chair. Proud and happy, two adjectives that describe my feelings this month. I am proud of our employees, our school system, and especially our kids. Last week, I attended Adaptations, where I witnessed a multitude of talented kids singing and dancing and sharing their joy with the audience. Kudos to the club advisor, the class directors, this crew, and especially the kids who made this magical entertainment possible. Last night, Board of Ed Vice Chair, our superintendent, and I had the distinct honor of attending the CAPS award banquet at Grass, at Grass Hill Country Club, where four of our exceptional students received awards for their leadership, scholarship, and community fellowship. Those recognized included our own student Board of Ed Rep, Sanjana Jane, and Matthew Derrick, both seniors with current rankings of number six and number one respectively in the senior class. S I S students that were recognized are all Ali Suarez and Hunter Frascator. Each of them were noted to have outstanding characteristics that make them stand out in their school and community. I am happy, okay, so that's my proud part, but I'm happy that our board works as a team for the most part. I am happy that we have such a capable central office leadership team. I'm happy that we have so many dedicated and caring employees. I'm happy our buses are running, and I'm especially happy that our Board of Aldermen and Board of Education have been working collaboratively together. Additionally, I am happy that our superintendent and mayor have established a relationship of respect and collectively and proactively work together for the betterment of our school community. However, I would be remiss if I did not express my sadness at the resignation of two people whom I hold in high esteem and consider valuable members of our school community. First, Mrs. Patricia Lilling, Administrative Assistant to Human Resources Department, is retiring after thirty-two years in Shelton Public Schools. Mrs. Lilling first started as a paraprofessional at Elizabeth Shelton School and Shelton High School from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-eight. She even worked in my fourth grade classroom with a student requiring special assistance. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and seven, she was the Secretary of Shelton High School Main Office. She eventually wound up at Central Office and H R in two thousand and seven and has been a well-respected and knowledgeable assistant to Mrs. Penoso and the Shelton Public School System. She will certainly be missed, but we wish her the best in this new chapter of her life. The second person who will be leaving us this month is our own board member, Joseph Pags Pacquiao. Joseph has brought prior knowledge and understanding of board operations, and I know he will still be available for any assistance we may need from him in the future. Joseph, you will be sadly missed, but we wish you good health and much joy in the future.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
But I still didn't accept the resignation. In conclusion, I want to extend to all my heartfelt wishes for a wonderful holiday and a new year filled with the blessings of good health, peace, safety, and happiness. May twenty twenty-three be a wonderful year for the Shelton Public School System, its employees, board members, and the entire school community, and may it be a year filled with pride and happiness. And that's mine. And now I'm going to the reports of the Standing Committee. Before I forget, I just have to add, our Sanjana, who is incredibly involved in anything and everything that's going on with robotics and swimming team and whatever, club being the president and everything, the summer she had her, she had some free time, so she wrote a book. Just wanted you to know, she wrote a book. So congratulations. We're very proud of you. All right, and I just had to mention that because that just wowed me. All right, reports of Standing Committees. Teaching and Learning Committee?
Teaching and Learning did not meet, but I would like to clarify, as Mr. Saranich did, that we are waiting a waiver. I think in my report last month, I said that however we're doing it, it has not come from the state yet. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. We will meet on January the tenth. We will be talking about A P courses, college experience courses, and the recommendations for the high school courses for the next four years.
Okay. Finance Committee. Diana had to leave. Todd, you have anything to report at this time?
We'll be presenting tomorrow night for everybody.
Okay, stay tuned tomorrow night. Policy Committee, Mrs. Rosner.
We just had a policy committing, meeting right before tonight for the Ed. We have worked on the advice and two things. Bylaw nine-three-two-one, remote virtual meeting. The bylaw was revised, and you will receive it in your packet, in your January packet for, to sit until the following board meeting in February. And we also worked on a draft on policy six-one-seven-two-point-one, Talented and Gifted Program, which will also be included in your January packet to sit until the February meeting to be voted on. Our next policy meeting will be on Tuesday, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, at two thirty.
No, can I just point something out? Because we just had the policy, and so the board knows because it's in the packet. The gifted and talented policy is a mandate by the state. It's a state statute, we have to put it in place. So that's why the policy is there, just so people know. I mean, it's, it's not that we just came in here with this policy, this is.
I'm certain some D T S.
No, but I just want, so when the board members realize where did this come from, we have to put it in place because it's statute.
Nine-two-two-two is going to haunt you.
She's going to dream of that.
Okay. Philippines and grounds?
We scheduled a meeting for January, I'm sure you'll reorganize with a new chair. I'd like to just thank Mr. Calhoun for all of his assistance with me on that committee because that was the last thing I knew about. He taught me an awful lot. I have to thank Mr. Orzetti as well because he was, he would go up to the fields and walk around and do things that I would never have thought of to do, so they both supported me, as well as everyone else on the board, Madam Chair. Thank everyone, wish you all good luck.
I still haven't accepted it. Okay?
Have you met my sister?
John, do you have anything to add or no?
Just a couple of, couple of notes. At the storage building for the high school, the pre-engineered storage building, that's out to bid, and we hope to get some, some really positive numbers back on that. And then the championship banners for the high school gymnasium have been, was approved by the Board of Aldermen on Thursday night, so those will be ordered and hopefully will be up very soon.
The banners?
The banners, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that is tremendous, tremendous news. I read about it in the paper, and as I said, it's so nice to, to have these things going on and a mutual working relationship. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, and all those involved in getting that done. Reports of Liaison, C E S?
C E S did not meet, but I was going to report on the legislative breakfast, but this month, Mr. Saranich is doing all my lines instead of your lines, so you've already heard about the legislative breakfast, so that's all that happened in December.
Cave?
Cave had at their recent CAPS convention banquet, they elected their Board of Directors, and President Isla Brown, first VP is Leonard Lockhart, VP for Government Relations is Mae Scotta, and Secretary Treasurer is Lon Sedman. Sedman?
You don't know, it's good news.
It sounds good.
Yeah, yeah. So they've reorganized, they have a new Board of Directors.
Thank you very much. Number fifteen, for your information, you have your vacancy report, staff and stipend actions, enrollment report, class size report, special education report, and on to celebrations. Any celebrations? I know I mentioned Adaptations and.
I was going to do the same.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to it? It's wonderful.
And I notice there, when the music teachers are out, there are Christmas programs coming.
And, and you can add that, hopefully, everybody will, will be, will, will be encouraged to, to go to the Drama Club production, which we don't know what, what it's going to be.
I know, I thought they were in town.
Well, they're still working on it.
Oh, and I, and I want to, as Mrs. Koutas just said about the holiday concerts, the, the holiday concerts and shows are on the board calendar, so if board members, you know, because I know some board members would like to attend maybe for a certain school, please just check the board calendar, and they're all listed.
Okay, thank you. All right, and guess what, everybody? It is six fifty, and we are adjourned.